Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on June 23, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta. Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Ben Walker is going to lead us into invocation and Councilmember George Glover is going to lead us in the pledge. If there are bid, please stand.
Dear God, I just thank you so much for the country that we live in and the freedom that we have access to that so many people don't, but I just want to thank you for your leadership in all of this. So God, I just pray right now for the leaders that we have, that they would be filled with more and more boldness and courage and just all the characteristics that make leadership so hard. And so God, I just, I thank you that it doesn't have to be on our own strength, but with you. And so tonight, we just trust that in your hands and Jesus name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. That brings us to public forum, which we don't have anybody signed up for this evening. So we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our senior center director Madison.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just giving you a little update on what's been going on at the senior center the past few months and also what our plan is going ahead. So as you all, I'm guessing, know, the past few months, all of our programming has been canceled except for our meals program. So we've continued delivering meals on wheels and have meals available for takeout only from the senior center. We have also actually just recently today started providing our foot and nail care again, which is provided by a healthcare company that comes every nine weeks to the senior center. So they follow all healthcare restrictions that are going on right now. So besides that, I have planned, I had planned a few things to keep our seniors busy and socially involved. A couple of times I did plan a parking lot bingo party, which I think was a big success. Unfortunately, we had some crazy weather for both times. But if you look on the senior center's Facebook page and also the city's Facebook page, you'll see some of the photos from those events. And also I've subscribed to an organization called Senior Learning Network and they provide video conferencing lifelong learning classes for seniors in their homes. So essentially it's just a presentation, an educational presentation on various topics that our senior members can access via Zoom for free. So that's been an option the past month and I'm going to be continuing that for the next few months, just for those seniors who still feel a little apprehensive getting out, they'll have an opportunity a couple of times a week to have a class and learn something new. So we are planning on opening back up on July 6th. So that is the first full week in July. That comes with, well, we are opening up, but with very limited, on a very limited basis. So we'll only have one program going on at a time at the senior center. Our meals program will continue as it has the past couple of months. So no meals actually being served at the senior center, just for takeout and delivery And of course, we are taking all health precautions into mind. Masks are not required, but are highly recommended. We'll have plenty of hand sanitizer and all that good stuff at the senior center for those that are going to be attending. So we'll take the health and safety of our seniors in mind, but I'm also wanting to get them back active because that has been detrimental to many seniors' health as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions for Madison? Not seeing any. Thank you, Madison.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Sean?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a good lead in from Madison, just a couple of things to update you on. First of all, COVID is still a very real thing and according to the latest reports, the numbers are not trending in a positive direction. Just over this past weekend, Kansas had an uptick of nearly 400 cases and 14 of them were here in Cedric County. I report on this every two weeks and so that number represents a 236 person increase in just the past two weeks alone for Cedric County. So people just need to be safe and still mindful and vigilant about social distancing and other recommended precautions. There has been no update from Cedric County regarding the committee set up to determine the rules and regulations regarding the distribution of CARES Act funding. As soon as we get that, we'll be bringing that to council. More locally, in addition to the parks, the playground equipment is back open. Public Works has been sanitizing and disinfecting them on a regular schedule and signs have been posted letting our residents know what kind of chemicals are being used on that. There's a QR code sign there so that they can check out the SDS form as far as the chemical. And finally, during our last council meeting, council, so to speak, set the people free and I'm happy to report by Friday, close of business that week, all the signs, the no parking signs had been taken down. So kudos to Zach and the streets department. Pending any questions, that's all I have, sir.
John?
I don't have any questions about that, but in a prior conversation with the mayor, I wanted to check on drafting a city policy on our, us doing business with companies that are in our rears on their property taxes or sales tax.
Yes, sir. We can work on that.
Okay. Tom?
I just have one and it's something that we've discussed in the past, but it's been several years. Trees in the right of way, low hanging trees. Whose responsibility is that? Is that the streets or is that the homeowners when a tree is growing out over the right of way?
It depends on...
We've had an incident before where somebody had a camper get torn up because they drove under a tree that was hanging out in the street and at that time, I think the, I don't know if the city cut the tree limb off or what happened, but we've got more of them that are happening around town.
Yes, sir. If there's specific addresses that you'd like us to take a look at, it's not a blanket statement that it's the homeowner's responsibility or the city's responsibility. If we notice that it's creating a safety hazard on the road, we're going to take care of it. Because if we try to leave it to the homeowner at that particular time period, you know, it may be a couple of weeks until they get there. So if we notice something that's creating an issue at the time, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Well, they're down less than, I'd say, 12 feet in some areas.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I know this is one thing we've talked about before, but as always, when you notice something, send an email with the address and we'll go take care of it. But when we just say it's a problem everywhere, we can't do anything about that.
I can identify it though.
Yeah. So send us an email.
But I was approached, so I have to go get that information.
Send us an email with it and then we'll get, look into it and get back to you. George?
Well, you know, many, many years ago, and I don't know why I did it, but I took a class on civil law regarding, it was about trees. And some of it, after all these years, sticks with me. And if my neighbor's tree is hanging over my property, I can cut that down off my property. But the strong advice, as I recall, was make sure you don't go forward near property line when you're cutting. But if a tree's on your property, it's hanging over your property, you can cut it off.
Yep. That's absolutely correct.
I...
The only bad part is that's on your dime.
Yeah.
So I know I've got the privilege of doing that multiple times.
Yeah, I know. There's a red bed that I've done quite a bit of whacking on over the years.
Thanks, George. That was all for staff reports. We'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And George?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. That brings us to item four under new business, which is discuss and consider a resolution for water improvements at Matt's and Winkley additions. Sean?
Yes, sir. Both item number four and item number five, there's only one word difference between the two, one's regarding water and one's regarding sewer. The attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing improvements to the water's distribution system. The petition was signed by the owners of records and more than one half of the area liable for the assessment for the proposed improvements and therefore the petitioners request that such improvements be made without the notice in the public hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01. The improvements include a water distribution system, including necessary water mains, pipes, valves, hydrants, meters to serve the area described as the improvement district, all in accordance with the city standards and plans and specifications prepared by the city engineer. The improvement district to be assessed for the cost of the improvements is Lot 1, Block A of the Matt's Edition and Lot 1, Block A of the Winkley Addition to the City of Park City, Cedric County. The method of the assessment would be equally split between the two lots. The apportionment of the cost of the improvements between the district would be 100% assessed to the two properties and 0% assessed to the community. So there's no physical impact and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Tom?
A couple of months ago, I had a discussion with one of the people that's requesting this and they kind of talked through what they were doing down there and I was in favor. So I'm going to make a motion that, or a move that we approve Resolution 1045-2020 determining the viability of making certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing, providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, water improvements for the Matt's and Winkley Addition.
Okay. George, you keep coming off and on. Did you have anything?
I was going to second it.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Not seeing any. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta. Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Aye. Or yes.
George Capps.
Yes.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes six zero. And that brings us to item five, as Sean said, which is just to discuss and consider the resolution for the sewer improvements for the Matt's and Winkley additions.
The same distribution on this between the two lots. The estimated cost is 77. I forgot to mention for the water distribution system, the estimated cost is 40,000. For the sewer side of the house, the estimated cost is 77. Again, split between the two lots with 0% assessed to the city.
Brandy?
I move to approve Resolution 1046-2020 determining the viability of making certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, sewer improvements, Matt's and Winkley additions.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta. Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes six zero. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item six, which is discuss and consider an ordinance for text amendments to the certain, to the certain city of Park City zoning regulations to increase certain maximum building heights. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is a matter that comes to you from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission at their last meeting approved these text amendments to the city's zoning code. This first one, which deals with maximum building heights, makes two changes. It changes the maximum height in the C2 service business district from 35 feet to 50 feet and it changes the maximum structure height in I1 light industrial from 35 feet to 80 feet. There are certain exceptions and you can see that in the staff summary. Certain office buildings, hotels, motels and grain elevators are not subject to those limitations, but every other structure is. The staff felt that the existing height limitation, which was 35 feet across the board in all of our zoning categories, was a little restrictive, particularly compared to surrounding communities and the general building, nature of building today. And at the Planning Commission, our consultant, Russ Avi, made it clear when he was addressing mainly the big change, which is in the I light industrial from 35 to 80 feet. That's a substantial increase. His point was, the way we have our zoning regulations drafted, we do have the ability in case by case to impose a protective overlay. And for example, if there was a structure that was proposed that was within the 80 feet, but for the zoning and the character of that neighborhood, it was thought to be inappropriate to be within the 80 feet, but still too high, that the Planning Commission could impose and then the governing body could ultimately approve, a protective overlay which would reduce that to say 50 feet, 60 feet, something like that. So the thought was from staff that this really brought us more current compared to other jurisdictions in the area and it did not create any potential risk of buildings being too high and having some negative impact on our community.
Thank you, Doug.
You have, and again, you have four choices. This is just like a zoning case. It's an ordinance that you're asked to adopt, but you have four choices. You can approve the ordinance, which approves the text amendment as it's proposed in the ordinance, or you can refuse to do that and deny the text amendment. You can approve it with modifications or, and that then sends it back to the Planning Commission, or you can request additional information and not take any action, ask that you get further information from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Doug. Tom?
Well, I've read through the ordinance and it makes sense. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the ordinance 1098-2020, amending Article 4 zoning districts and of the zoning regulations of the City of Park City.
And John?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Aye.
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta. Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes six zero. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider an ordinance for text amendments to the City of Park City zoning regulations regarding accessory parking standards. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is a similar matter. It comes from the Planning Commission and you're asked to consider an ordinance which makes text amendments to our existing zoning code. This specific amendment, although it mentions generally parking and loading, it really is pretty narrow in what it applies to. It is in Article 5, Section 100 and it applies to off-street parking in R1 and R2 districts. And it only permits parking in what amounts to front yards or yard areas for existing structures that were built prior to 1981. And what this proposed amendment does, first thing that it does importantly is, in the past week, the city has required a permit for people that wanted to park in these front yard areas. This text amendment strikes that requirement. So there's no longer a permit requirement for this. But it does impose some, what staff believes is necessary certainty in describing how this can happen. Code enforcement has had some significant difficulty in dealing with some, what they thought were completely inappropriate front yard parking situations because the existing zoning regulations were a bit ambiguous, particularly with respect to the area that was dedicated to the parking of a vehicle. And then secondly, just about as importantly, the concept of a dustless hard surface. That was just not well defined and it was difficult to enforce. So what this does is it sets those requirements out specifically. You can't have more than 25% of the area used to park vehicle, a vehicle. The area can't be greater than, and I'm losing my place. Sean, what are the dimensions? Nine by 18?
The minimum lot size would be nine by 18. It definitely defines what dustless pavement is. Then the other thing is it does set out a standard for how the designated parking spot, how deep would it be, four inches of material, that it has to have a border and that it's properly maintained. So it's regularly straightforward type information.
Okay.
And again, you have those same four choices with respect to the consideration of this ordinance.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1099-2020, amending Article 5, off-street parking and loading of the zoning regulations of the City of Park City, Kansas.
And John?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta. Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes six zero. That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider amending charter ordinance 33-2014 related to permitting uses for local alcohol liquor funds. Doug?
Mayor and council, I didn't realize it was that long ago, but this charter ordinance does a similar thing for the one-third of the liquor fund dispersments that the city receives from the state of Kansas for the Parks and Recreation Fund as we did in 2014 for the Police Drug and Alcohol, Special Drug and Alcohol Fund. You may recall that in 2014, actually I think there was some accumulation of monies by the police department because they were finding it difficult to find appropriate ways to disperse the monies that were accumulating in their special alcohol and drug program fund. And because the distribution of these monies is done by a state statute which is non-uniform, the city, or any city, has the ability to charter out from those provisions. So what we did with the Police Special Alcohol and Drug Program Fund in 2014 was to expand and make a little bit more specific, some of the uses for which those monies could be spent. In addition, we also provided in that charter ordinance that decisions made by this governing body on spending those monies would be considered to be final decisions and appropriate under our charter ordinance. I think that's worked well. The police department has made good use of those monies over that period of time. We're faced with a similar problem today with the Park and Recreation Funds that we receive. The language of the statute is fairly broad, but it does require some interpretation. And so what has been added here specifically are two phrases to the permitted expenditures that can be made from the Parks and Recreation Fund, and that would be capital expenditures and expenditures for community events. That's, I think, topical. There's been some discussion about things like, for example, sidewalks and sidewalks in the park would be repairing and replacing those would be a capital expenditure. And likewise, as we all know, that we now have a community relations, community relations board, which will be undertaking community events and doing that largely in a way that maybe the Parks and Rec were involved in the past, but specifically staff felt appropriately using money dedicated to Parks and Recreation. So this would allow those sorts of things to happen and give the governing body, again, much broader discretion in how to expend that one-third that we get set aside for Parks and Rec from the state of Kansas. And again, like we did with the police funds, decisions made by the governing body to expend these funds are considered to be final decisions and appropriate under our charter ordinance. So again, we've taken away the second guessing that might have happened if we'd have proceeded under the state statute by the state of Kansas. I'd be glad to answer any questions. And again, to remind you, this requires a vote of the entire governing body, including the mayor, and requires six affirmative votes to pass and then is subject to a 60-day protest period and then would go into effect if no protest is filed after those 60 days.
Thank you, Doug. I will say that there was a typo in the packet, so that charter ordinance number should be C40-2020 and not 41. Does anybody have any questions for Doug or is there a recommendation? John?
What would be the cons to this? I mean, what would be, the local, I mean, other cities around us do this or what? Me, to me?
I can't address the Parks and Recreation. I can tell you that when we addressed, boy, and six years went fast, when we addressed the Police Special Alcohol and Drug Program in 2014, I actually found language from Lawrence, Surprised that Lawrence was doing what they wanted, but, and use that, but I think, I'll speak for the chief, I think that police departments and those funds were difficult for many cities to find ways to spend. It's available to cities. I think they ought to be doing it. Legislature passes bills and they put in language that they think is all encompassing, but then when you maybe get to the edge of the envelope a little bit and decide, well, we'd like to build a new shelter here or fix these sidewalks in a park and does that really fit into the language that exists today in there? And this just takes away the question where we can't be questioned by the state for how we're spending these monies because we've decided that we are going to be the final arbiter of that.
Now, I will say that when we went through our last budget workshop, I looked at this fund balance and I believe we were 64,000, 67,000. And if you saw the budget amendment that Dee put out, I asked her to take another 30,000 out from that to go towards sidewalks. So this once again gives the council the ability and clears the language up so that we can spend those funds so they don't just grow in there.
It just seems like a pretty antiquated way of doing business, I guess, without changing it. I mean, to me, if we got the money, we might, should be able to spend it on what we're wanting to do. So I guess I'd be ready to make a motion unless someone else had something. I'd make a motion to, I move to approve charter ordinance C41-2020.
That would be 40, right? The typo that I said?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
40-2020, a charter ordinance exempting the City of Park City, Kansas from certain provisions of KSA 79-41A04D and providing substitute provisions concerning the expenditure and use of local alcoholic liquor funds.
And Brandy?
I second the motion.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Melvin Kerr.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that charter ordinance passes seven zero. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider a home rule ordinance establishing an events fund. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is somewhat related to that last discussion, and particularly kind of driven by the budget season. We do have established a community relations board, which I think there are expectations for great things, and for having a budget and expending substantial monies for community events and for sponsoring and supporting community events over the next year. At present, Dee has discovered that there is some question about the ability of the city to transfer funds from the fund we just talked about, the Park and Recreation Special Fund, or even the general fund, for the city to support the budget of the Community Relations Board. So what this is, is I've called it a home rule ordinance. It's an ordinance that we're able to pass under our home rule authority. It's not a charter ordinance, but it's an ordinance where the state has not said anything in their statutes, either limiting or providing for a budgeted events fund, which is what this is seeking to do. So the city is doing it itself and is establishing legal authority for an events fund, and then there is a statement in there in section one of what this is for, in furtherance of community events and to support other events within the city that advance the city's mission statement. And then this further provides that monies may be budgeted and transferred to such fund from any source which may be lawfully utilized for such purpose. This is necessary from an accounting standpoint. This is the means for doing it, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. Anything more specific or accounting, Dee could address if she needs to.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Does anybody have any questions? Jim?
I don't have any questions, so I would move to, I think there's a typo here, so if I'm reading it right, but move to make ordinance 1100-2020, a home rule ordinance of the City of Park City, Kansas, establishing an events fund to finance community events.
Okay. Brandy?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn-Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Melvin Kerr.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes six zero. Thank you. That brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider purchases and replacement of two-way radios for police and code enforcement. Chief Lawson?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the police department's current, we have portable radios, which would be the ones that we carry on our side here, similar to what's on the screen, and then mobile radios or in-car radios. The radios that we have now were purchased in about 2009. At that time, I wasn't here, but it's my understanding that it was kind of not known that that purchase was going to be required. It was due to a change in the 911 radio system. So the city had to come up with the money that wasn't really planned for at that point in time. So we've been planning for the replacement of the radios, which the lifespan of them is considered to be about 10 years. And we've reached end of life on those as of last year. Motorola no longer makes parts for these radios. So the ones that we have now, if they break, we don't have, they can't fix them. There are no parts that are manufactured for them anymore. We have had radios that have broken. We've had a variety of problems, and it's become increasingly obvious here, especially in the last six months. We've had officers have had trouble with receiving and transmitting, particularly from inside buildings or inside a closed vehicle like an ambulance. That's one I'm thinking of in particular. And our tower that we transmit to is only over here at 45th and Hillside. So we've had conversations with the radio shop, Horace Sedgwick County, and they really lay the blame at the feet of the age of our radios. So a lot of the other police and other first responder agencies in Sedgwick County are already in the process. Wichita's already replaced a lot of their radios. Sedgwick County's in the process of doing that, and so are virtually all of the other law enforcement agencies in Sedgwick County. The last several years, we've been setting aside money in the capital equipment fund with the anticipation of this purchase coming up. I didn't know exactly what the cost was going to be because we didn't have the price, so we had to kind of estimate that based on what it was recently. So we've been waiting, in part, because of, we wanted to get the best price we possibly could. So generally, the state of Kansas contract, we can ride on that. That's a much better price than just the retail price. For a lot of people in the state, that is the lowest price. However, Sedgwick County negotiates a separate contract, and we can ride on the contract with Sedgwick County, and that contract was just finalized here within the last few months. So we're now able to get that price. There were some photos that we put up there of what the new equipment looks like. Motorola is really, I won't say it's the only player. There are a couple of other brands available. I know some of the, well, one or two agencies within Sedgwick County have tried them. I'll just say the results have not been stellar, and that's putting it mildly. So Motorola really is about the only player there. They're more than the others, generally speaking, but they also tend to be very reliable. The infrastructure here is made by Motorola. So when you introduce a radio into this system in Sedgwick County, you're kind of introducing a foreign object into a system that wasn't really designed to work with it. So we have really good compatibility if we use Motorola. And that's what, again, Sedgwick County Sheriff, Wichita Police, almost all the other agencies in Sedgwick County use Motorola as well for that reason. We obtained quotes from Motorola Solutions, our local dealer here in Sedgwick County, based on the Sedgwick County contract, for 17 handheld radios and 11 in-car radios. That's enough to replace all the radios in our existing police vehicles, and also that's enough for one for each full-time position in the police department. We also need portable radio holders, and we obtained quotes for those from Galls, which is our primary police equipment supplier. The quote for the radios total was $109,298.16, and the radio holders was $1291.15. Again, this money was budgeted. A little bit of explanation about that. Last year, we took some money that was in the Drug and Alcohol Police Fund and used that for in-car computers with the intention, and I brought that to you at that time, I know I mentioned it to you, that after discussing it with Shaun, we kind of wanted to do a swap and spend half of that money from, or a portion of that money from Drug and Alcohol Fund for the computers, but then to turn around this year and buy the radios from that fund as well. So the recommendation is to purchase the radios for the amount of $109,298.16, radio holders for $1291.15. Total amount is $110,589.31, and the recommended funding sources for this are the Capital Equipment Fund 15 for $50,000, $589.31, and then Fund 23, Special Alcohol Police, for $60,000.
George?
Well, I, first, I would preface that with saying, I remember before we got Motorola's, and we had a terrible time. The best thing that ever happened to the Park City Police Department was when the 800 system come along and we got the same equipment as everyone else. So it's true, you know, Motorola is a way to go on this. So I would move to approve the quote from Motorola Solutions for radio and equipment in the amount of $109,298.16, and the quote from Galls for portable radio holders in the amount of $1,291.15 to be paid out of the Capital Equipment Fund, $50,589.31, and the Special Alcohol Police Fund for $60,000.
All right. Jim?
I'd second that.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. Thanks, Chief. And then you're up for item 11, which is discuss and consider the purchase of warranty for the WatchGuard in-car video equipment. Chief?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, the police department has 11 in-car video systems, one in every one of our police vehicles. We currently have two body cameras and one, the computer server, the server is a vital piece of, that's the storage basically for the system, stores the video. These systems, when we purchased them, they have a one-year warranty at the time of purchase, and the age of our systems that we have now range from one to seven years old. WatchGuard, which is the company that makes them, will not warranty them beyond seven years. It's been difficult to track the warranties. We ran into, we've had this problem for some time, but we really ran into a problem this last year because of swapping of equipment between vehicles, when something got moved from an old vehicle to a new vehicle, or something broke and we got a replacement. I brought with me the box over here on the table, it's kind of a show and tell, I guess I would say, but that's the gray box. There is the digital video recorder, that's kind of the brains of the system. Those go down, they're a hard drive basically, so they run, they spin all the time. It's a great system. It's rugged, but being in a police vehicle, you know, where it's hot and it's dusty, they break eventually. So that's what they count as the, that's got the serial number. So they count that as the unit. So when you change that, you've essentially changed the serial number of the whole unit. And this is something we were not quite aware of, and so the end result is that we found out our warranty has expired on all of our equipment, and has been expired. We didn't pay anything in 2019 at all. So in order to get up to date, WatchGuard requires, it's like insurance, you can't have a gap in your insurance and then try to renew it. So we have to pay for the period that was not covered, and then also if we want to pay for the future. WatchGuard won't warranty these beyond seven years of age. So the ones that we have that are seven years old are in the two vehicles that we're rotating out of the fleet. So that's not going to be a problem because they'll be taken out of service, and we'll probably keep those for parts. It's important to renew the extended warranties, and I'll just, I'll give you my personal philosophy. When I buy something, most of the time I don't buy the extended warranty. You know, it's kind of a math problem, but I look at the value of it and how much it costs, and occasionally I might, maybe on a car, I might if I got a good deal, but on these, I think it's very, it's vital that we maintain the warranty. And there's several reasons for this. Probably the primary one is the server software itself. This actually pays for the licensing fee for the server itself, and without that, the whole system essentially, if it breaks, is not going to work. It also pays for, if we have to do data transfer, we just bought a new server, excuse me, earlier this year, we had to transfer all of our old video to the new server. That process, the company took care of that under warranty, because the server itself was under warranty at that time. It took about three days, and they did all the work. If Ted had to do the work, it would have taken many, many days, maybe a week or two, just to transfer the data. Another thing, if something breaks, they ship us a new part immediately, so we get it very, very quickly. If it's not under warranty, you have to wait. The price is also more expensive. That DVR, if we bought one out of warranties, about $1,500, just that one part, $1,500. The cost of the parts themselves are, we don't budget really for repair, so this is, in a sense, this is our budget for repairs, the warranty cost. If we were to try to budget, then you have to guess how much is going to break, and that's a situation we could be over, we could be under. It's an insurance policy, and like all insurance policies, you hope you don't need it, but if you go over, you're going to really wish that, I would wish that we had it. So to pay for this, the cost is $8,725. That would cover all of our video in-car cameras and our two-body cameras and the server, and it would cover the past. They kind of cut us a deal, basically, WatchGuard did. And I have to credit Ted for talking to them and working with them to try to get this straightened out as far as where we were on warranties. The initial cost that they gave us was $11,000 and something, so it was quite a bit more. This would, the $8,725 would cover the past, it would cover all of this year, it would cover all of next year, so we would not have to pay anything in 2021. We won't have to pay anything until 2022, so it's not even in the budget for next year. The funding for this, the radios that we purchased, I mentioned that we had more money in the Capital Equipment Fund for radios than what we thought we needed, and the cost of the radios was about $9,400 less than what was set aside and budgeted for radios. So that $9,410 is what I would recommend to use to pay the, pay this $8,725 warranty charge. So the impact is that it's budgeted, it was budgeted for radios, but it's in the Capital Equipment Fund, it could be used to pay this warranty charge.
John?
A few questions. You may have said this, so our cameras, are they four or five years old now?
They range in age from one to seven. So they're spread fairly evenly because what we've been doing generally, we get a new car at about six years old, we buy a new system. That's about the time to start to go out of warranty.
And I know we may have said this before, so the data from our cameras, is it stored here on our own server? It doesn't, WatchGuard doesn't do the storage?
That's correct, yes. They have a choice, we could pay for cloud storage. There's, that's, there's a big debate over that right now. You know, you pay a lot for cloud storage. I guess I won't get into that with Shaun.
No, I already am not, because I wouldn't know what you're talking about anyway. So, question I have though, I guess, on the warranty coverage, we're paying for 2019, and then we're halfway through 2020. Did we spend, since we did pay for warranty, did we replace any parts or anything out of our own pocket that now we're paying the warranty on those years? You understand what I'm saying? Did we have any replacements or anything that we paid for in that time?
You know, I would have to check with Ted on that. That's a good question. I don't, I'll say I don't think we did because I know that we used a couple of used parts and transferred them from another vehicle that had been taken out of, so, but I will check into that. If it is something that we, that was covered, then we'll seek to have reimbursement. I don't think it's going to be like a DVR because I would, I think I'd remember that expense.
Okay, I got you. That's all I had, I just, I was curious to that. And if there was anything, I guess I would ask that we at least make a request to WatchGuard that if we're going to pay for the warranty, they can at least cover that part, or I guess take that out of the cost. So, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Tom?
I thought John was going to make a motion, and I was going to second it, but your quote's still valid, isn't it?
still valid, isn't it? Because it expired on May the 31st.
Yes, sir, it is.
So I just want to make sure it's still good. I'll make a motion that we approve the quote from WatchGuard for the extended warranties in the amount of $8,725 to be paid out of the Capital Equipment Fund.
Okay. John?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That brings us to Item 12, which is discuss and consider council liaisons. So usually, we bring this back every couple of years or so to see if anybody would like to kind of trade up. Tom came to me a couple of weeks ago and says he was interested in maybe serving on a different board as a liaison. So I just wanted to bring you guys the sheet, see if you're happy with it, see if anybody wants to make any changes, do anything different. So Tom, I'll let you kind of start because I knew you had, you wanted to express an interest in planning and zoning.
I'd like to go through here, and you've got some appointments here, like you're showing on here, SCAC appointment, which I'm doing Criminal Justice. That meets every two months, and it's a SCAC appointment, it's not a Park City appointment, so it's just for information. Solid Waste Management, I don't know who's doing that for SCAC now. If they've still got Brandy doing it, there was a gentleman that's been doing it for years. I don't know. Do we have somebody that's interested in that when it comes up at SCAC? I'll throw a name out there.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if there's any interest in changing, or I know we hadn't gone through and looked at the list this year. I just told Ray if we were doing some swapping around, I'd be interested in doing planning, and just kind of left it at that.
I will say Ben did reach out to me and express interest in staying on the Parks and Rec Board, that he still wanted to be involved with that. Jim?
I don't feel real strongly, but I'm happy to stay on the Board of Health or wherever I'm needed, so I'm happy, desire to change.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I'm happy we're on that. The Community Relations Board, are you needing somebody on that to help out, or what is that?
It would be nice to add somebody to as a liaison to that. Is that something you're interested in?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested in helping out with that.
Okay. Brandy?
I'm only on one board right now, so I'll just throw out there, if anybody wants to get off one, if you're on multiple, I'm okay taking another board.
I will say that on the stormwater, Ben kind of got that by default. Everybody remembers when we did that last time, Ben wasn't here, and he got, he kind of got that. And in his conversation with me today, it was Parks and Rec. He didn't really mention anything about stormwater, so.
Well, he's not here tonight, too.
Yeah. George?
I'm happy for him.
Okay.
I'm good.
Tom? Yeah, I'm throwing out there. Can you approach me because you had?
I just said I'd be interested in it, but if we're not doing any swapping, I'd still go do it. I mean, I'd be willing to do it, but Melvin's not here to talk about it, so we're kind of.
Did Melvin say anything about?
Melvin didn't say anything to me about it tonight when he told me he wouldn't be here, so.
I mean, I would say if Tom has an interest in it, we could either make him the alternate or the liaison.
I would say if we're making a change, and without Melvin being here, as Ben being the alternate, I would move Melvin to the alternate and let Tom be the liaison. That way, Melvin's still kind of connected. If he has a passion in that, he can still be here.
Yeah, let's do that. I'll make that motion.
Tom?
It's not what I want. It's just what I, I would be willing to go do it.
Well, it's too late now. I'll make that motion.
I just know it's time, and I didn't know if we were going to do any moving around or if we're going to leave it alone, or that's why I brought it up.
Does anybody want to do stormwater? Or keep that the same? Hearing nothing, that sounds like keep it the same.
It says, I'm confused on when they meet.
We've got another one on here, and Dana's perfectly good at doing what she's doing on it, but I didn't know if anybody was interested in being an alter or a wampo either.
They meet during the day.
But that's a daytime deal.
No, it is. I'm out. And that's been the problem in the past, and everybody else is usually at work, so they're out. It kind of sounds like the changes at this point is moving Tom Jones to liaison for Planning Commission and Board of Zoning and Appeals, Melvin to the alternate, and then adding George Glover to the Community Relations Board.
And Melvin's still on the Chisholm Creek, so it's.
Would anybody like to be an alternate on the Community Relations Board?
When do they meet?
Brandy said she would do it.
They're Tuesday. Brandy said she'd do it unless she wanted. She wants.
Okay. Marla, do you have those changes? Does anyone want to make a motion to, for the, John? Make a motion to amend the liaisons and alternates as. Okay. Third second. Jim?
My second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. That brings us to Item 13, an executive session for consultation with the city attorney regarding matters of privilege under the attorney-client relationship relating to contract negotiation. And we're looking for 40 minutes. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
That would be for the governing body, the administrator, the city attorney, and the assistant city attorney.
Okay. John?
So moved.
Okay. You need to read it back. Oh, we got it. Is there a second? George?
I'll second that.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. We'll be out for 40 minutes with the possibility of an extension. And we are back from our executive session at 8:43, where no binding action was taken. That was the last item on our agenda, so we'll move on to governing body reports, and we'll start with Jim.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Brandy?
I have nothing tonight.
George?
Well, I don't have much, except I'd like to say something about my wife. You know, I might want to nominate her for Woman of the Year. The third of, the third of next month, she's put up with me for 61 years, and, you know, they've been good years. I just, 61 years is a long time.
It's a milestone. That's huge.
Probably most of you guys weren't born when I got married.
All right. Tom?
I just wanted to say something I brought up earlier when I was talking about the trees and stuff. I have talked to people when they talk to me about getting on the computer and getting on the website, and there's a place there where you can issue a complaint, or people know that there's problems. They don't want to do that. They just want their council member to come in here and say that. So that's why I'm doing that. But I have to go back and get more information because I can't tell you where these problems are at. I have to get it, so.
Okay. All right. George?
Yeah, I'd just like to say this COVID-19, eventually we'll get through this. I know it's hard to be positive at this point, but I would keep your head up. For me, it's just trusting in the Lord. He is my rock, He is my salvation, and we need to have faith in Him, and just lift Him up. He'll lift you up if you allow Him. So I would just tell, tell our residents just to hang in there. We will get through this. There are agencies available if you need help with different things. We had talked about those before. Sedgwick County has agencies that are available for rent and utilities that you can tap in. I know with the unemployment, a lot of those things are going to end the end of next month, so if you're like me, where you plan ahead, you can start looking at those things right now. We also have fireworks. I guess we have the fireworks coming up. We will do that. I believe it's at 10 o'clock, Sean? And then are we going to have the food trucks here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Four trucks, starting at 8:30 in the evening.
Okay, thank you. So we'll have that available, so we'd like for all the residents to come out and see that. That's all I have.
John?
I have nothing. I've said all I could, so I would make a motion, we adjourn.
All right. Jim? All right. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
Lawson?